Mr. Placko, come on the roll, please.
Lori Diziski.
Here.
Linda Grassi.
Here.
Scott Fishel.
Here.
Tom Hegg.
Here.
Jennifer.
Here.
Thank you. Can we stand for the flag of allegiance?
Let's give this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so the first thing on our agenda is the consent agenda for finance and audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the audits listed on the finance and audit consent agenda is recommended by the treasurer in A and B.
A second?
We all just want to.
Any discussion on these? Come on the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Diziski.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Hegg.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next on the agenda is a consent agenda for personnel.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the audits listed on the personnel consent agenda is recommended by the superintendent and I through Pat.
A second?
Seconds.
So any discussion on these items? If not, come on the roll, please.
Lori Diziski.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Hegg.
Aye.
Jennifer.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the discussion for facility condition assessment proposal. So I will turn that over.
I have a list I can go through of this, how we got to where we are today.
I'll just do, just so we're all well set. So, so as you know, we've been going through the process of trying to assess what things need to be done to the campus, Lammouth, Mill Ridge, and to Buckeye. We've gone through several iterations of review. Ultimately, we, there was an RFQ that was let, that was approved by the board, and we had responses to that, the RFQ. There were four responses that were timely, and so we had, we've had a couple meetings discussing it. We met on Monday to go in more detail, and we put together a review matrix, which Mr. Placko, I think, is gonna go review, but it was a pretty thorough process, lots of input, and, and we can see where we, where we come out.
Yeah, that was, that was a good summary. You know, we had, we had four firms, as Mr. Hegg said, that expressed interest in doing the facility condition assessment for Melrose Elementary, Lammouth Middle School, and Riverside Campus. And, you know, this week, I have a meeting, we had the buildings and grounds committee meeting where we went through a matrix, which I'll let Mr. Hegg review. Pass out here, and we just kind of walked you through what we did as a committee, how we got to, we heard announced two firms out of the board that were very similar qualifications, and so we kind of, just kind of walked through what we did and their information. So, what we did is, we, we put this review matrix together, just so we can have a solid process analyzing the four firms, what their qualifications were, and what was in the pricing proposals. And we pretty much set up, I think it was seven different sections that were, if you were to look at the request for qualifications, which is still posted on the treasurer page of the website, if you want to refer back to that, also on the Google Drive, I shared with the board. It's, the first like seven sections of this review matrix, basically looked at all of the things that the RFQ said were required for submission and qualifications, and then some additional items that, that we felt were, we thought that were important when looking at the pricing proposal and just the overall review of each firm. So, on the left-hand side, basically lists all the required expedition items, a point value, how many points they can get for that item, and then there's four different firms across the page, and we kind of just ranked each firm based on what was submitted. We discussed as a committee, you know, we kind of all had a score in mind or on paper individually of what we thought made sense, we talked through it because there was, you know, a little bit of variation, variation between each person, the number, we kind of came to a consensus of, this is how we should rank each section, and at the end, we totaled up to see where, where it lies. So, just looking at, you know, just some of the information about the business, you know, number of architects, qualifications of that, required from submit, like organizational charts, resumes of our staff, workload availability, equipment availability, previous similar examples of other facility condition assessments, insurance requirements. There's also a requirement where we, we had a draft contract of what that would look like, whatever interested firm would ultimately selected, did there was any objections to that contract or changes, so that was something else to look at. And then just the overall pricing proposal, you know, what was the methodology, and they addressed timeline, when they can complete the work, things like that. And so, if you, if we, we assessed each item individually, with the, if you, a total of, no, a hundred, basically a hundred and thirty points that we awarded to each firm, and we had two firms that ranked very similar, which were Byaloski and K2M, the two firms that were similar, qualified, and there we have it, that at the very bottom has what price they were provided. So basically, two firms that, Byaloski and K2M, one pricing proposal was a hundred and two thousand, a hundred and four dollars, the other firm was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eighty-four dollars, and which discussed between the two firms, if they're similar, you know, it didn't make a lot of sense spending a thousand dollars more for the other firm, you know, what value we're getting, so we kind of landed on Byaloski as the running favorite at this point, and then I know Mr. Schlicht, Mr. Arlessic were reaching out for references, and if you wanted to provide any insight into that.
Before we, if I may just chime in, so, in a, in a previous life when I was working for another entity, we used this type of process to review candidates. So sometimes there'd be an opening position, there'd be ten, fifteen people who would apply, you'd have a team, each of them would read the, read the resume, go through a matrix evaluation process. We'd get together, we would discuss, you know, sometimes we were consistent, sometimes we were outliers, but we went through and discussed those things to make sure we all had consensus. That's very much what we did here. I think it's, it's a viable process. There's, you know, there's no other way to really, that we could come up with any way that would allow us to assess so much data across these four firms, than to come up with, with an answer. And I would say as well, and I should have mentioned this earlier, we're, we're very grateful to all four firms for having submitted and, and, and taking the time to, to actually submit a proposal to us. So, if you go through the process, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just wanted to get that out there. So, please.
And like we spoke right before the meeting, we were unable to find anyone that would have a difference between if they used Byaloski or, or K2M. If they used K2M, they were very pleased with what K2M did, and same for Byaloski. So, there's nothing I can tell you, Rich, that you could share either, to distinguish anything different between them.
Yeah, when we, when we started the process, we start, we had two meetings to review this information. First, we got the, the actual proposals, and we had an opportunity, Tom and I had an opportunity to read those through, and then we had a meeting to discuss them, and we came up with this matrix methodology, and, and I think it actually, it worked really well. I'm happy with how it came out. I'd like to, you know, thank Gary and Mike for putting this information together. It was a lot of work. We reviewed the matrix. Once, once they had put it together initially, we, we had an opportunity to provide input on it, and then we met a second time to then score the information. So, we had, we had the opportunity to, to do our own scoring while we were at home or whatever, on our own time, prior to that meeting, and so I thought the process worked well. And, and really, everybody's, everybody's assessment came out pretty even. We were, we were-
Reasonably in the ballpark. We had some outliers, and we discussed them, and, you know, we came to consensus, right, but to a degree.
I thought it was a good process, and I feel like we really did our homework on this, and it really was a process by which the committee is supposed to do the work, right, and we did it, and I really liked what we did, so. Well, thank you guys all for the work on that, too.
So our goal is to, at the May twenty-fifth meeting, have a contract on their consideration. We'll reach out to the, to the Byaloski, to talk through what legal also, to do the proposed revisions to the contract mostly, I think it's more just legalese type of items, you know, basically saying that they're gonna put, they're gonna cost us, they can't guarantee exactly, they won't guarantee until we get on things. But, you know, and make sure that they're, because, and then just make sure their timeline, that they can actually complete the work, you know, for summer here, so.
I think one of the things that all, that the two, two firms that we liked the most, did a really good job of, of what their end outcome was gonna be. They discussed their methodology, they discussed, we had asked for how they were gonna write things and prioritize the things, and how they were going to cost things, and what their expertise was in doing those things, and estimating and whatnot, and they, they were both very solid. But that's, that's why we listed all of these things where you say C, C seven point three point five and ten point three. Those are all actually listed in our proposal, or our request for proposal. And we thought it was important to put those out there so that people understand that's actually what we asked for, and that they actually answered that to a great degree of satisfaction. I don't know about you.
No, I, I agree. The, the process was good, and then as it, as it shook out, it was, you know, point-wise between Byaloski and K2M, and ultimately, they were neck and neck, and as was already reported, they, everybody, we did continue to do diligence with calling their references, basically, people that they had worked with before. So, so at this point, I'd be hard-pressed to say that it's, it's worth the, the extra eighty thousand dollars or so to, to go with K2M, when, when both of the firms were, you know, ranked similarly, and, and have the same, really, reply from previous clients. But, I mean, this is not an insignificant decision here. I mean, this is really where we're starting to put rubber on the road as far as, you know, redoing things in the campus and other buildings. So, I certainly, if there are questions, concerns, other, other details you would like, I think this is, I mean, really, this is, this is, this is not insignificant, so.
And I wanted to add, point out, too, that Byaloski was the only firm that actually broke out a cost by building, which I thought was interesting to see, you know, basically, you know, Buckeye was, and Buckeye and Melrose were twelve thousand, seven hundred CCQ dollars each, and Lammouth was twenty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-six, and Riverside's fifty-one thousand, fifty-two dollars. So, it was kind of nice to see that, and, you know, we see by a building, it kind of, okay, yeah, we're spending a hundred and two thousand dollars, but thinking by a building, it kind of puts more perspective into this. And to spend that money to have a ten-year plan of what, what we, what, in what order we should do improvements.
And as part of the, the RFQ, you know, we, we had it tiered from one through five. One is, you know, must, you know, critical safety issues, two a little bit less, three, and so forth down to five, which were, you know, more cosmetic things. The, the one thing that I think was solid about the RFQ was that you can only have one priority one and one priority two, so they couldn't stack them all up. They really have to differentiate between the things that need to be done, which I think is gonna be very helpful for the board in selecting which projects to pursue. So I, I mean, no, no guarantees, but I do believe this is a, a solid process that will move the district forward and stabilize the physical structure of these buildings, and, and create an environment where we can utilize them in the future. Any other questions, comments? I mean, I know this is a lot, the emails are out there. I, I would say that obviously, we're, we're, we'll run this at the end of this month, so if you haven't had a chance to, to go through it in detail, I, I would recommend you, you reach out, go through it. If you have questions, reach out to Mr. Placko or to Mrs. Grassi or me regarding questions you may have on the process. But, I'm, I'm personally pretty excited, and, and I think we're, we're taking a good step forward.
I really think we're gonna get a great quality report when it's all finished. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna have some really solid data, complete data, I mean, extremely complete data about what's in our buildings, what, what needs to be done. Yeah, it, it's just gonna be a really great roadmap for us to be able to figure out what our next step is gonna be. I would highly suggest that if you guys, you guys, everybody has access to the Google Drive at this point, correct?
Well, yeah, this is Google Drive.
Well, I mean, to the actual RFQ, right, the, the proposals, I would suggest that if you have some time, that you at least read the top two, or peruse them a little bit, just to see what they proposed, and what they are actually going to be giving us, so that you have a better idea of, of what it is that they'll be giving us at the end.
I, I probably saw three firms on there, though. Just double check, yeah.
Yeah, there should be four.
It might just be, I overruled one.
I think they were uploaded, like, in two sections, two sessions, so I think you have to.
We had to read that four before, I mean.
Right, I know, I see four here, but when I reviewed them, I thought I only saw three. So I wanted to make sure that, I don't know how much one, I can't. Maybe you might just scroll, just scroll down the right side a little bit.
I know, right. They were there.
There's, there's two number one, two number two, two number threes, and two number fours, which one's the statement qualification, and one's the fourth, actually, eight documents.
So it's out there? Okay, sorry.
It's like, yes, sir. RFQ, and we lose all.
I would also suggest that people read, like, the, the resumes of the individuals that will be working on this. I was extremely impressed with the professional service that they'll be providing us with, and the, the structural engineers, and the, you know, HVAC people, and the electrical engineers, and mechanical engineers. There was a lot of professional expertise that they'll be bringing to the table, which is needed, so. Do we plan to invite them to the May meeting, just so that we could all read them and get eyes on them?
Yeah, we have them presenting, like, special reports and.
I would like that.
I mean, I, it is pending further research, making sure that we're all on the same page, but, but I, I'm, I'm definitely open to that, but, but certainly, if, now's the opportunity to, to dive in and ask any questions that may be out there, because we, it would be a little embarrassing to invite them and then have them be.
No.
No, or, or a lot of, a lot of questions. But, but, so, definitely, now, now's the opportunity to, to dig deep and, and ask the questions that you may have.
Right, because between now and the next meeting, you guys are gonna, like, actually contact them, tell them that we plan to move forward with them, right?
Yeah.
And then try and hash out some contract that we have to agree on.
Right, with the caveat, obviously, that the vote has not actually been taken.
No, I'll make sure we, we can take.
Anything else on that, on the facilities plan?
That's not for me.
Alright. Alright, so that brings us then to a discussion regarding the complaint that was made about executive session. I did ask, uh, Mr. Mackenzie to come and join us, to provide us some perspective on this topic in regards to what can and can't be discussed outside of executive session, and just possible path forward. So, I'll turn it over to you, one of us.
Thank you. So really, this topic is a, it, there's, it has three basic categories of things to keep in mind. So, the first category is what, you know, what, what are the facts? What do we know right now? And what, what, don't we have a complete understanding of? In other words, what else do we need to find out in order to assess the situation? So, that's the first category. The second category is a matter of the Riverside rules. So, your self-government rules, the things that are in your bylaws, and in particular, zero-one-six-six, which is the bylaw that relates to executive session, that specifically says that this obligation of confidentiality exists and extends to all discussions that occur in executive session. Also, a part of that Riverside set of rules would be your Board of Education handbook, that I believe was approved in December of twenty-twenty-two, that calls out in several locations the same obligation to maintain confidentiality of any and all discussions that occur in executive session.
December was a revision, so it was approved initially before that, but December was the last revision.
Thank you. The, so that's the second category. So your Riverside rules. Then the third category would be your legal obligations. So, the Riverside rules do not have the effect of law. They are just the rules by which you have agreed and approved to operate. But, the legal obligations are those things imposed on you by the General Assembly of the State of Ohio, or whatever other legal body might have jurisdiction over your operations. So in this case, there is a legal obligation to maintain the confidentiality of any information that you receive as a board member that is confidential under law. That obligation extends while you're a board member, and forevermore, even after you leave the board. That's a, a legal obligation that exists forever. As it relates to executive session, though, that's a particular subcategory of this legal obligation. That piece basically says that in order for you to be legally obligated to maintain the confidentiality of executive session discussions, that information must be, by law, already designated as confidential. Student information is, under FERC. Or, it must be designated by you in advance of that discussion. So it's not good enough, under the law, to say, well, all of our discussions are confidential, it says that in our handbook, it says that in our bylaws. You actually have to designate it as confidential before the discussion takes place, and that must be done clearly as the legal standard. So, so in order to sort of violate the law, when it comes to the potential disclosure of confidential conversations from executive session, you have to, one, have been in executive session, and, two, that information has to first be designated as confidential.
What is the designation of something being confidential look like? Is it a verbal statement written?
So most commonly, it's a verbal statement that would happen at the beginning of an executive session. This information is especially sensitive. We, we must maintain the confidentiality of this information going forward. It's a very, it's a unique practice, rarely-used practice. It most commonly comes up in situations like student information, which is designated by law to be confidential. But other information is often discussed in, in an executive session is not necessarily private information. It's, you know, you might be discussing a potential employment, a hiring. Well, that becomes public when you add that in. The fact that you review a resume in executive session does not convert that resume to a private document. That resume is always a public document, whether discussed in executive session or not. So that's why, in the absence of a legal designation of confidentiality, like student information, the law requires you to first designate that information as confidential before that legal obligation is triggered. And the reason the law sort of takes that additional step is that a person who violates this standard, or any of the other ethical standards, faces first-degree misdemeanor criminal liability. And so because of the seriousness of the potential consequences, the law says it's not enough just to be discussing a resume, let's say, in executive session, when you're in the context of a hiring decision, you have to, you have to go one step beyond that and designate it as confidential. So that's sort of the, the legal way of the land. You have your facts, what you know, what don't you know. Your Riverside obligations, which are your self-government rules, the things that you've agreed to abide by, and we see those in your bylaws, we see those in your handbook. And then the third category, which is your legal obligation.
Can you explain how, who has the authority, and how something is clearly designated to a public official as confidential?
Sure. So, the, the clearly designated piece, I mean, I think Mr. Hegg's question hit on that already. How, how do you do that exactly? So, it is possible that it's done by an email. Hey, we're gonna have this executive session, and it's a very sensitive topic, we need to maintain confidentiality. You know, let's say you're talking about heading litigation, and you might want to designate that as confidential information, because technically, if you don't, that information would be subject to discovery by the opposing party. Even though it took place in executive session, it could be subject to disclosure under the rules of evidence in courts. But most often, it's done with a verbal, you know, sort of a verbal warning, a verbal admonishment at the beginning of the discussion. The, you know, and it could range from, it could cover any number of topics. It could be an employment matter that's especially sensitive, it could be, you know, anything having to do with labor negotiations, you know, any of the other topics of executive session could be designated as confidential.
And could you again state who has the authority to do that?
So it's really a board decision. I think you're, under our bylaws, our board president has a fair amount of discretion on how, you know, sort of the day-to-day operations of the board-level activities occur between meetings. So I think a board president would have the ability to do that. In the absence of that, the board could, at the beginning of the executive session discussion, say, hey, I think this is a special category of discussion we're about to have. Do we all agree that this is executive session confidential information? So then I think the board, through a consensus, could do that. And then I think there's the formal approach, which would be someone make a motion during the regular open session of the meeting to say, we're about to go into executive session for matters of personnel, I think it's especially sensitive, and I make a motion to designate it as confidential. Is there a second? And it's voted up or down.
And would that be the more substantial, clearly acceptable way of doing it?
I mean, it, really, any of the three ways are recognized under the law. Usually, there's no dispute as to whether it happened or didn't happen, and so the law is, there's, there's not a lot of case law saying this way is better than that way. The cases that have dealt with this particular issue, that's not a fact that's in dispute, so the court has just accepted that as having happened or not happened.
And could you also explain the statutory provision for state and federal law, and then something else that you choose to make on your own?
So, so as far as that designation of confidentiality, so, in many cases, that's been done for you by the General Assembly or by the US Councils. You know, the statute says this information is confidential a matter of where it's being discussed, whether it's in the superintendent's office or in executive session, and there's any number of topics that would fall under that category. And if there isn't such a legal designation, then you would have the operational authority as a board to say, hey, this isn't designated by laws confidential, but we think that for our operations, for the Riverside school district needs, we think this- we think this information needs to be maintained as confidential, so we're going to designate it as such.
Where do the postings stand? Does that make a safeguard by virtue of being in executive session that is confidential?
So, it's, it's confidential in the sense that your Riverside rules say, we're not going to disclose anything, right? Your bylaws say that, your handbook says that for the board. But, for the legal obligation to be triggered, you know, sort of the next higher level of formality, it has to be designated by the board or by law as confidential in order for that legal obligation to trigger.
The legal obligation, that, that's not a violation of sunshine law, that's just a legal obligation. Like, I'm just looking at the sunshine law information, it says, right at the bottom of the page, on page seventeen, they're expected to observe strict confidentiality.
The, the sunshine laws, the Open Meetings Act, the portion that deals with executive session, doesn't really go anywhere near this particular topic. That, that legal obligation is contained in the ethics laws.
Okay, so that's different.
102.03 subsection B.
Right, it goes on to the next page, it's saying it's signed of corporate board of boardsmanship. And in some cases, they cause legal liability.
And in some cases, it's the, it's the ethics.
And so, our, our board handbook gives a blanket statement that it should be kept confidential on the bottom of page fourteen.
Yep, I saw that.
Is that, that's not sufficient, right? Like, I'm just like, right, I'm just trying to go down that, the path of, you still have to do another step.
Yeah, there's no way to sort of create a blanket in advance designation of all discussions as confidential.
Even though it says in our policy manual that no board member, committee, or subcommittee shall disclose the content of discussions that take place during the sessions. It's in our policy, though, still too in our bylaws in keeping with the confidential nature.
No, I understood, I looked at it, and the case law is that that discussion topic in executive session on that day has to be clearly designated as confidential to trigger the legal obligation.
So, if anyone has looked at the updated 2023 Ohio Sunshine Manual, if you go to page 121, you can read about this. And it clearly identifies what can be said and what can't, what can be discussed, what topics can and what can't.
You mean during executive session?
Executive session.
During, or during, or after?
Oh, after. Certainly, it doesn't, in executive session, you're in session, so it's after. So, Dave Yost, who's now the Attorney, Ohio Attorney General, when he was auditor, put out a state, a statement about executive session. He said, keep in mind that there's no penalty under the Open Meetings Act for revealing what was discussed in executive session. And the updated sunshine manual basically restates that. It is, it is a very, very clear law, so higher revised code.
It's confidential.
I'm sorry?
Unless we state that it's confidential when we go into executive session.
Right.
Let me, let me add one more thing. And in our, in our agenda, when we get our agenda, both online and printed, there's items that say hiring, discipline, negotiation. And at the very bottom of those items that you can choose from, it says matters required to be kept confidential by state or federal law. Okay, as long as I've been on the board, that's never been checked in all of our meetings. I'm not so sure we've ever talked or discussed anything that would fall under the, underneath that statutory provision, okay? But, it is available for us. And then the next step is to designate clearly, the terminology is clearly designate something as confidential. And then, as Mr. McIntyre said, I guess it can be accepted and not challenged in, in any form. The real proper way to do that would be to have a board vote.
So, perhaps when we're having executive session moving forward, like best practice, we should have, have the vote to go into executive session, and what should that be after that?
You can't take a vote in executive session.
No, 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 not, not, and it's still in regular session, but after we've agreed to go into exec, that we're going to go into executive session to discuss this, and these matters will be confidential, right? Another, another agenda item that we would have to vote on, correct?
Yes.
Would be best practice.
Because then it comes down to who has the authority to do it, and I think generally, the board president would. But, it's really, really safe if the whole board votes on it. There's no holes, for sure.
Should it have been done before the executive session or after?
Before the executive session, because a, a public official has to be notified that that is confidential before you discuss it.
And how do you designate, say, we're talking about two different personnel items, but you're checking the same executive session boxes?
Right, I mean, we'll have to give enough information.
How do you designate one and not the other, or are you just automatically designating all?
No, I, I think.
You can't do it like that.
Yeah, you can't do it like that. So, you're going to have to give enough information about the discussion topic without revealing the very thing you're trying to keep confidential.
So, if you had two items, could you say, like, we're going to be discussing two items, item A and item B, and item A is going to be considered, right? Would that be acceptable?
That would.
I don't know any board that does that.
No.
Yeah, I've never seen that.
I think most boards wouldn't have to do that. I think therein lies the problem, this board shouldn't even be having to have this discussion. The things that are spoken about in executive session are being talked about publicly, so. That's the bigger issue.
That, that would be, would it be required to be spoken about in an open session?
Not necessarily. You can choose to go in executive session, you can have anyone there or exclude anyone you want. And so, you don't necessarily have to have it in an open session.
Oh, I understand.
There are, there are people, there has been directives by council that it should be in open session, but it doesn't have to be, certain items.
But, but if it's, if it's not something of the confidential nature, I thought our obligation was it to be discussed in an open session. Isn't that kind of sunshine?
I think you're getting at that, why do we have executive session, right? It doesn't have to be held confidential.
But, but, I mean, it's, it's timing. So, so, so some things are timely, need to be confidential. But ultimately, once the board takes action in a public setting, those documents or whatever, those decisions are then going to be public scrutiny. But, at the time we discuss them, we need to have, we have the ability to discuss them in a, in a, amongst ourselves to determine the best course of action. But, obviously, you didn't vote on them in, in, in a public session.
Yeah, I mean, the real, I mean, I think, it's like you're, you're getting to is that idea that the real definition of executive session isn't confidentiality, it's the absence of the public.
Exactly.
Because eventually, most of the things that you discuss in executive session do become public.
And that's fine when they become public at the time they're supposed to.
Correct, you still have rules in place.
Right, we still have, we still have ways that we operate to be an efficient board.
Correct.
And ways that we all, we all, I work for the same reason, I'm trying to follow the same rules, not just doing whatever we want to do. I think we're, we're still missing the whole point of this, what this conversation was too, is I, I don't disagree that we need to talk about how this happened, how executive session is supposed to work, but the fact that Mr. Fishel directly went out and told another member of the community about our own executive session. And how do we report as a board, then, to trust him at all? Because there is zero level of trust, as far as I'm concerned now, with one of our senior board members.
Before we've made decisions public.
Correct. I mean, I was certainly suspicious of that act for quite some time from comments that have been made by the public, that clearly, we're getting information that came from our executive sessions, which was unconfirmed at our last board meeting. And now, we're all supposed to just sit here and act like we didn't hear what was said? I mean, I, I totally agree with you to have this conversation about how executive session works, but we also have to have a conversation about how as a board, we function with a board member who doesn't respect the rules of the board, or the policies, or the Riverside way, or any of those things of doing it, and just doing it however he wants. It's so incredibly unprofessional and unacceptable. But, he's going to sit here and talk about new sunshine laws and things like that to divert the attention to what the actual problem at hand is. And that is that he has not kept any of our conversations confidential.
And how do you know that?
Scott, it has been clear from things that Mr. Weiss has said in public that he has gotten something straight out of executive session. I don't believe everything he says, but clearly, there are things he has said. And I, I know that he had conversations with other people, telling them directly things that you said to him. I watched him hand a piece of paper to you before for things for you to read in public, like, let's, don't pretend like one of these happens.
I don't know what you mean by him handing me a piece of paper to read in public.
You have a little statement you read every meeting with some statement you're going to give that day. And I've watched him slide a piece of paper under to you with things that I've watched you read.
That's not accurate. It's not accurate that what he has given me, I have read. So, there's been some assertions and claims, I'd be a little bit careful about those, okay? Without knowing what you're talking about. And, and so, what I would say is, as public officials, as elected public officials, we all operate under one thing, and that's called the Ohio Revised Code, okay? And I think we had a fairly good tutorial by Mr. McIntyre today with the Ohio Revised Code is. And, and again, if anyone wants to look into that, and to look at the updated Ohio Sunshine Manual of 2023, if you go to page 121, it'll save you a lot of time, and you can get a good reading and a basic understanding of what we're talking about here. But, that's how we, as public officials, operate. Other rules that are trying to be extra constitutional or extra legal, that's another topic of discussion. But, what we're operating underneath is the Ohio Revised Code. And that's the behavior that's required.
There's also boardmanship, there's also things that we've agreed to at this table that you continue not to follow. So, I guess that's the problem, and I think that's what Mrs. Harden is trying to get at, is we get the law, we get it. The problem is, is that we all have to work together. So, we continuously hear that we need to work together, we're trying to make those attempts, we're trying to come to agreements on how we work together, but you continuously work outside of that. That doesn't help us, the five of us, work together and make sure that we're driving the district business forward. And that's the problem. So, we get it, we know the law, we know how executive session works. The other problem, though, is not being addressed.
But, you would like to operate differently?
No, I would like to operate per agreement.
Okay, and what agreement is that, that it goes according to this?
It's just, I'm not going to go in circles, you've seen them, you voted on them, we have agreements saying that we'll keep the information confidential. Like, it, it feels like a circle, it's a constant circle, and we cannot, I, I don't even know where to go with it. I just, that is, that is why we, one of the reasons why we put together the board handbook, so that we know at the table how we need to approach different things as a board. And we agreed to that. You know, we have it right here on page fourteen, there are clearly indicated in sunshine law, you know, that, that we observe 100% confidentiality of any items and issues that are discussed. We all agreed to that, we all voted on it, we all proved it. I think we need to operate by those standards, and then, when things are ready to become public knowledge, that, that's a different story, and we vote on things, and we have those conversations in public here at the table. And then, and then that decision is off the table at that point. I mean, it's off the table, so you can have conversation about that, but you still really shouldn't be having conversation about what went on in executive session, like conversations between certain individuals, or what actually was said. We've made that decision, we've talked about it in this executive session, yes, we did, right? Now, everybody knows about it because we're voting on something, whatever, we're talking about it in public session because it's now up for public vote, you know, like, things like a line-out sale. We've talked about negotiating for the purchase or sale of property, we've discussed that in executive session. And we don't share that information until that becomes then public knowledge, right? Public, we're going to put it out on the table now, we're discussing it in public, it's time to do that, we're going to vote on something. And so, it's just, it's, it creates an atmosphere of mistrust. And, and what can I say here that's not going to be, like, shared outside of this room when it's not supposed to be until the time is for that? It's, it's hard to work with that, so. I think that's why we put that in place, that's why we put this in our own board handbook, so that we have standards of behavior that we follow amongst ourselves.
Well, certainly, this board needs to work better together to serve this district. That I agree on 100%. As far as the handbook goes, is the handbook completed?
We voted on it twice.
Or is it still going through policy changes?
We, we voted on this question here at this table.
Exactly, I, I heard there was a policy change in it that was supposed to be made.
What we voted on is in place.
And when was that?
December of 2022.
And there's not been any changes to it after that?
The original handbook was approved, November, or September 22nd of '22. Then we made a revision that was later approved in December 15th.
And OSBA helped us put that together.
And that, that revision was voted on and approved in the handbook?
We approved that entire handbook, the revision, it was, the whole thing was part of the agenda, so.
Okay.
The entire handbook was approved originally, and the handbook that included the revisions was approved.
Right, so I thought, I thought there was another revision going on.
There's a, then we are, I think, we are going to get additional revisions going forward.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so, that's what I was asking about.
Yeah, but it's still in place. The, the expectation is that everybody read it, and everybody reviewed it, and everybody had the opportunity to make comment on it.
Do you, do you have the verbiage on that, on that vote, with the, was there a resolution? Or what was, what was the verbiage on that?
We, we all had ample opportunity to provide input into what was in that book. We had ample opportunity to, you know, discuss revisions that we thought about. It was discussed, if I'm not mistaken, in the policy committee twice, because you guys discussed it. Like, you guys are the ones who actually helped put that together with OSBA, you drove that process.
Yes, Tom and I had a Zoom call with Cheryl Ryan.
Right, and then, and then we also had the ability to provide input for the revisions that were necessary. And again, when the policy committee reviewed that, that was brought to the table, we voted on it.
We did, because Tom and I had a very long discussion, if I remember Tom, on just certain language that we had to get to to both be in agreement on it.
Yeah, I, they didn't call that, it's too much water.
You can buy it and give it to me, and maybe at the next meeting in Old Business, it could be, it could be discussed.
I guess, Mr. Fishel, why, the resolution, I believe, was approved at handbook. So, I guess, knowing what the resolution says, and the fact that you voted in favor of it, are you saying you don't agree with it? I guess, I don't understand why that now contributes to the conversation that we should be following what we agreed to.
So, it's my understanding that as elected officials, we are to follow Ohio Revised Code, okay? And we can make any rules that we want, but they don't supersede the Ohio Revised Code. Now, Ms., Mr. McIntyre, would you say that's accurate?
It is.
That is my statement. I, I voted, I voted to approve the spend the money to create a handbook, and that's what I remember. I approved the, the creating of that handbook. Because the board wanted to create a handbook that, quite frankly, we could have gotten a copy from the OSBA for free. But, the board wanted to spend money, and I did not, I did not push back on that, I went along with it.
Actually, I think you voted no on that piece, but, just to be clear. But, again, you approved the handbook, so now you're saying you're not going to follow it, is that what you're telling us?
That's not what I just said.
Well, that's what I'm hearing.
That's what you just said.
That's what I'm hearing.
So, here, here's, here's how I would frame it, you were absolutely right, we fall under the ORC. But, the ORC does not get down into the nitty-gritty of governance within a, a school district, right? So, the handbook is our discretion as a board to set the policies and guidelines that we will operate under. So, I, I guess, I, if, if we have agreed to those guidelines, which we have, observing them, even though it may not be legally wrong to not observe them, is, in my opinion, has been in the best interest of, of the district and the board to allow us to operate effectively and with some level of trust. It does not mean that, that you can't remain principled to what you believe in. You can certainly remain principled to what you believe within the context of that. But, but frankly, when, when we do not observe the policies that we've all agreed on, in my opinion, it creates drama and, and, and distraction to what we're here for. And I, I just, I don't, I don't see the advantage of not adhering to that.
Okay, so, what I would add to that is this. There's, there's a lot of hearsay and innuendo about what may have been said. And Mr. Weiss, who made that statement in an open meeting, has been making statements to people that are not true. And, including even at a Lake County Commissioners meeting for the whole county, okay? And Mr. Weiss has gotten his nose turned because he wants to run for school board. He thinks he's the most qualified, and he's the best person in, in the he's the most qualified, and he's the best person in, in the district to be on the school board, and I told him very clearly, he did not get my support, and very clearly, he could not do it and win because of his criminal record, and so that's what I said to him, and at that point in time, he has become infuriated, infuriated, and he has attacked, 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 and he's been calling a lot of people, saying a lot of things, and, and in open public saying things. So this board has chosen to take that and run with it, and that's the board's option, and I'm just, I'm just giving a little context about Mr. Weiss and the reason for his actions.
Mr. Fishel, I don't think, there's other things, though, that we've agreed to in the handbook that you continue to not follow. For instance, I sent an email out every week before the board meeting saying, please tell the board what old or new business you're bringing, everybody else at this table follows that, but you don't, you continue to come to the table and surprise us. The idea of that was to make sure that everybody was prepared to have a discussion, because that's what we are supposed to do here. So it's not just what Mr. Weiss said, it's a continuous effort to not work with the board that we're talking about, on things that we can agree to. So, besides Mr. Weiss, and I think many people here know Mr. Weiss, so you don't have to give us his background, but besides Mr. Weiss, it's, it's not just that, you're, you're focusing on one thing, it's how we work together as a board, we've been trying since January of two thousand twenty-two to figure out how we all work together. I think the majority of us are doing that, and I'm sorry, except for you, like, you continue not to do that. So, it's, it's, besides this situation, so, again, besides what the ORC says, besides that, we've made agreements to try to work together, I believe, the only person not following that right now is you, and we, and it doesn't feel like you have any kind of commitment to try to do that, but yet you say we need to work better together.
Yeah, so, if something comes up outside of the two days that's been required to put something on the agenda, and it can't be put on the agenda, it does usually fall under new or old business, at least that's, that's the discussion we've had in the past, and if something comes up and, and something gets stated, it certainly isn't on the agenda, I, I don't know how you get around that.
You reply to the email letting the board know, I'm bringing this to the table, that's what we're asking, so that all of us can have a discussion.
So if it's within that forty-eight hour timeframe?
You can let us know you're bringing it.
You're, you're just looking for a notification?
That, yes.
I was not aware of that, because the last time I tried to put something on the agenda, and it did not.
That's, those are two different things.
Excuse me, I'm not finished.
They're not, they're two different things.
Excuse me, I'm not finished.
But you don't understand, you're gonna say the wrong thing, you don't understand.
Excuse me, Ms. Harden, I'm not finished. So if it's within that forty-eight hour timeframe, it cannot be formally put on the agenda, correct? But what you're saying is, you would like an email to all the board members stating, this topic's going to be brought up.
Mr. Fishel, we agreed that any old or new business that was to be brought to the table, you would send an email to all of us, so we were aware of what was being brought to the table. I'm not talking about adding an agenda item, I'm talking about old and new business discussion. So, an agenda item, yes, we want it on for eighty hours, if not, you make a motion at the beginning of the meeting to try to add it, if you get support, we add it, if not, we don't add it. I'm talking about old and new business discussion, something that simple, where we said, tell us, so that we were prepared to have a discussion, instead, you come to the table without telling us, you read a statement, you make a comment, none of us are prepared for it, so there's not discussion, it's not doing what we're intended to do here, we're intended to have discussion and try to move the district business forward.
Well, I'm more than happy to send an email if there's a topic I'm gonna raise and it's outside, it's within that forty-eight hour timeframe. The last time I tried to put something on old or new business, I was told that it was within the forty-eight hours and it couldn't be done, so I'd have to find a place to say it. So anyway, I, I'm more than happy to do that, and, and if it's within the forty-eight hours, it'll just be an email out to each of the board members.
Old and new business does not have to be in forty-eight hours, it's not an agenda item, agenda items are forty-eight hours, old and new business, you could send us an email five minutes before and say, I'm going to send, bring this to new business, that's what we're trying to say.
At the end of the day, I think.
But you, you're trying to circumvent it again, you're gonna say, well, it was forty-eight hours, it's not, it's old or new business, we're always on the agenda, it's never any different, we're asking for a heads up, so that we can work together.
I think, I think, it's, it's just respectful to be able to understand in advance what is going to be brought to the table, rather than be blindsided and have no, no, nothing, you have nothing, nothing to say, I can't say anything, yay, nay, good, bad, indifferent, and it makes, it makes the rest of your board members look foolish, and I don't know if that's the intention, but it's, it's, it's unprofessional, and it doesn't give people an opportunity, we've, we've also been elected, just to remind you, we've also been elected, we have the right to be able to respond, and if I'm going to sit here at the table in front of a camera, I would like to be able to have some heads up of what the topics are that I'm going to be asked to discuss, that's my professionalism, when I come to the table and do things, or a meeting, or whatever, I wanna be prepared, I don't want to be unprepared, I don't go anywhere unprepared, and so, at the end of the day, we are asking further respect to be able to come to meetings prepared, to have conversations about what other people want to discuss, right? I mean, I don't necessarily have to agree with somebody who wants to bring to the table, that's great, but that's what the nature of discussion is, but if I haven't had even five minutes to formulate my thoughts, my, anything, like, I have no, sometimes I just don't even know what to say, because I haven't had an opportunity to think about it, and, and I'm not prepared to discuss it, so I can say I'm not prepared to discuss that, and I think then that would be the most appropriate response, if somebody's going to continue to bring things to the table without giving anybody notice.
So, Mr. McIntyre, I believe we did some training with you at the beginning in January two thousand twenty-two, or February two thousand twenty-two, that was, was it the ethics training that we did? I can't, or boardmanship?
It was, it was boardmanship included in it.
Okay. I would like to suggest that we do it again as a board, as a group, is there, anybody in favor of doing that? Do we think it will? I, I don't know, but I don't know what else to do, I think we have a problem here where we, there is some lack of trust, I, so I'm up for suggestions, we have to figure out how to work together, and I don't know how to do that, so I don't know if anybody else has suggestions?
I don't have any other suggestions, I, I do know that, again, we put together the board, our own board handbook, our method of operating, we did that for that sole purpose. That was the reason why we did it in the first place, so that we all know what to expect from one another.
The handbook was actually originally adopted on August twenty-fifth of twenty-two meeting, it was a resolution to approve the recital of the school district board education handbook as recommended by the committee, we went to make a revision, uh, December twenty-second, but we decided to wait until we're back to the policy committee, and the first revision was December fifteenth.
And how was the vote?
It was unanimous, and then December fifteenth was a, we were originally, we had, had a revision for the nine twenty-second meeting, but we decided to postpone that, and then in December was a resolution to approve revisions of the recital of the school district board education handbook, and that was unanimous, and copies were attached, and we're the hearts of attraction.
Right, and that's a public document, and people can read it, and we were all expected to read that, and we all did, so.
No, Mr. Happ, I don't, do you have any suggestions or?
Well, I, I think, I think, I, you know, I'll just kind of reiterate, reiterate what I said before, is that, that I, I do believe it's in the best interest of the district that, that the board has agreed to procedures that we follow them, and, and I don't see the cost of not, frankly. There is no sacrifice, we are all individually elected, we have our own perspectives, I, I don't feel that, that the, the procedures that are in place have inhibited my ability to express my opinion in, in the board, and, and we have, you know, we walked away from the table, you know, maybe disagreeing, but, but there hasn't been drama about, oh my God, you've blindsided me, or, or I don't understand where you're coming from, I don't see the cost to it, I do see the cost to the district of, of not acting by that, but you are absolutely right, there, you know, as we've discussed, there's, there's no legal obligation for you to do it, it's just a matter of whether or not you see the same value, and, and that's, that's your choice, you are independently elected, and, and Mr. Fishel's gonna make the decision one way or the other, and, and whatever the decision is, we just have to live with it. I mean, there is, there is no, I'm not, I'm not sure that there's any other, other guideline or any other area, you know, there's no negotiation there, I guess, but I, I would say that, that, you know, I've always tried to present my perspective, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, but, but it's always been, my, my intent has always been to strengthen the district, or to propose things that I believe are the right answer for the district, and I have not been inhibited by following the guidelines that we had in place, I, so, that would be my statement, is I, I think there's an upside with no downside, and there is definitely a downside to not observing that, is, is my, my perspective.
Is there any, if I work with Mr. McIntyre to come back in, just to refresh us on boardmanship and the ethics laws, is everybody, anybody not wanting to do that?
I'm ready.
Sorry?
I've reworked the presentation, so.
Don't get all fresh in you.
This is very exciting.
Is it, as a state, the same time, less, or more times?
Same as any time.
So I, I will work, I'm not hearing anybody saying, no, absolutely not, I don't wanna do it, I will work with Mr. McIntyre to find out a time that's good for him and the board, probably one of those sessions that we already have on the calendar, to do that. Any other discussion here? All right, so that brings us to our next meeting announcements, there's a curriculum or programming committee meeting, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven thirty AM, and a business meeting, May twenty-fifth, at seven PM. I will make a motion to adjourn at eight oh two PM, can I get a second?
Second.
And, Mr. Russell?
I.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion carried, thank you.